Okay, we're here today with Alan Jaeger. He's running for county commissioner for another term. He represents Holton Township, Blue Lake Township, Eggleston Township, Casnovia Township, and last but not least, Moreland Township. He's been a county commissioner for two years. Tell me what possessed you to run for county commissioner two years ago?
Well, the first thing is, is that right now I represent Blue Lake and Dalton, and three of them I don't represent at this present time. Trying to, I'm gonna try to represent. What made me run was I just wanted to say that there are different ideas out there than to just spend, spend, spend attitude. And I want to know where my tax dollars were going, so I ran to find out.
What's been your biggest surprise being a county commissioner now for the last two years?
Probably the lack of caring, I think, by the other board members about every single dollar that's being spent. I think that, I really think spending's out of control. I mean, they leave it all up to everybody else, to all the people that work for the county, the directors and things. And I think that that is a mistake because these people have been in government all their lives. And all they see is bigger and bigger government where they can hire more people and have more and more stuff. And I don't think, for me, it doesn't work very well. I want accountability of all the money being spent.
What do you think the biggest boondoggle in county government is as far as spending money?
Well, probably community health, and I can't even control that because of the, it's all Medicaid money and stuff. The amount of money, sometimes for just a few people, it's just astronomical. You know, you can't even really get into all of this. So, it's all mandated stuff, Social Security, all that kind of stuff's paying money on all this stuff. And the community health is, someone's gonna have to do something to counteract how much we're paying out to people. I don't think we can keep it up. And it's a lot higher than this county commission job, I think.
The new jail, there's been quite a talk about for a number of years now that we need a new jail. Do you think we need a new jail? Do you think it's mismanagement? Do you think the present one can just be rehabilitated? What's your thoughts on that?
Well, personally, I don't think we ought to get a new jail. But I think, first thing first is that it should go to a voting people. That's the way I want it to be. Let them decide if we're gonna spend all this money. Now, if we go to renovation, and we're only gonna maybe get another seven million besides the seven million we got or something, then maybe I'd say, might be alright to do it without it, just bond it and have the board of commissioners sign it and take the money. Lack of maintenance, I think, has hurt that jail a lot. But I think that's been, personally, I think it's on purpose. They, if you just let it deteriorate, you're gonna replace it. Because if we, even if we don't find it that bad, one of these days, the state will step in and they'll make us do it. So, I think, I think I wouldn't be laying all my maintenance workers off. That's one place I'd definitely go. As far as building a new one, I don't like the idea of building a new one at all. A new one comes with a lot of mandates. And the mandates are, you're gonna build all these classrooms, and you're gonna build all this stuff to help. And it does help people, I would imagine. But if you go to jail, went to jail for a reason, more than likely. Some of them are still innocent, they haven't been proven guilty. But I think, I don't know, I don't wanna send people to classes, and then they're only there three months, and they get out on special favors or something because they went to classes and all this, and then they get out for that reason. If they're gonna get out, it's because they've done their time and it's time to move on. Now, once they get out, am I, do I think they need to be rehabilitation, classes and all that? Well, they can do that on their time, but if we had to help, I'm all for that. But as far as just, I don't like all these classrooms and everything else. I'm trying to think of all the rest of your question here. Let me think about the rest of it. I have to think about the cost, and the sustainability of it, I think is where I should go. Everything that I believe in, it doesn't matter whether it's a program through mental health, community health, or through any rehabilitation of houses or anything, it has to have a plan behind it. You can't build a jail without a plan. And the long-term feasibility is the most important plan. It's more important than the jail itself, or what size of cells and everything else. It has to be, you have to be able to sustain this thing. And I believe that they won't be able to. I think that they're gonna, you, they wanna build it with another extra 150 people, 200 people in it, and they think they can get $35 a day for each one of these people that they put in there over a year. So, anything from a year, year and a half, we can keep that guy, and we make $3 a day. Well, if you take $3 a day times 200 people, times 365 days a year, it's really not very much money. So, if we're gonna borrow $30 million to try to make 300,000, I think the taxpayers are getting a very, very raw deal. It would be easier to let them, them people that, however over a year, go to Ottawa or Kent County and Waco, they have extra bed space, let them go up there. It'd be cheaper for all of us in the end.
Well, it sounds like if they build a new jail, it's one thing, but they're talking about expanding the inmate capacity, so if they have more inmates, they're gonna have to have more guards by law.
Well, you're gonna have guards, you're gonna have clothing. They didn't say they can put LED lighting and all this and make it cheaper, but you still, if it's that much bigger, you're gonna have more lighting, you're certainly gonna have more heat, because you can't build twice as big a building, it would not take more heat. Just think of the amount of clothes everybody wears. I mean, you gotta wear, buy all these jumpsuits. We just spent $900,000 for a medical staff, because we've always used kinda in-house before, and now we're gonna outsource it. That was $900,000 for 400 people. Well, at that rate, it's gonna be 1.3 million for 600 people. So, nothing's gonna be for free. It's gonna cost a lot more to do this. I always refer to my son, if he comes back home, he ain't really burning up any more space or anything, but my bills all go up. So, you ain't gonna put more people in there, you know, bill's going up, so.
So, one way or the other, if they expand the jail, we're gonna pay more money for it, and we really don't have any choice in the matter? Is that the way you're reading this?
Well, we're gonna, like I say, it's about that sustainability. It doesn't have the money. Can he show proof where the money is to keep it running? Right now, we have, there were four things in the audit that were cost overruns. And there were big things like maybe a sewer line breaking, or major things that happened, and you gotta replace them. So, there's nothing you can do about them, because they're fixed into it. But the fourth one of the four was the sheriff's operations. And it said right in it, the sheriff's operations are the retirement health and the retirement benefit package. These are what made it. Not, not because he hired more staff, not because he done anything else. It's all because of these two things. So, and this has been worse. This isn't getting better. As the stock market drops, you're not making 8%. It gets worse and worse, and then you got less people paying in all the time, because people are retiring out, and you're not hiring anybody. So, it compounds itself. So, right now, we're at, we're at 31% of officers' pay goes into just his pension plan. And I think that's unacceptable. We can't keep doing it. And if the stock market, now this year, maybe it did go up 8%, maybe we won't have to raise it up. But somewhere, there's an audit, it was supposed to already be out in our hands to tell us what it's gonna be, because every two years, you run this audit to find out how much more you have to pay into their pension plans. And it should've been out, we were told it was gonna be out, but I'm sure until on November 6th, that's in someone's desk somewhere, not to be seen. If it was good news, I think we'd have seen it. So, that ain't happening.
True enough. The wastewater system. We had a situation where at one time, the wastewater system was full to capacity, and developers had been told, don't even think about putting in a new subdivision, we can't take the, we can't take the wastewater from it. Now, however, we've got a problem the other way, that we've got more capacity out there than we know what to do with. Has the county board been responsible in trying to get new businesses or new users to come to the county to use the wastewater to help to stabilize the usage there, to make up the slack for when sappy left, so the county people aren't gonna have to pay higher sewer rates?
First off, we don't run private business, as far as I'm concerned. So, we can't make anybody move here or anything like that. I think that sewer hookups are so high, that's, you're just not gonna come here. When you look at Dalton, Dalton is a prime example of what you can do wrong. You put it out through there, and the hookups are so high, a lot of the businesses moved out. The one that, that was supposed to really make all the bonds good, has so much money, they want in court not to hook. And so, now, the hookup fees are so high, I don't see anybody moving on that road. So, what we've done is, we've made it worse for jobs and opportunity, not better, because now we even have less flow, because no one will move out there. And the ones that were out there have quit being out there. So, and we've had that discussion before. I mean, I, I don't think, I think, I'm gonna get off that subject just a little bit, but not too much. We, besides, we were gonna run that line up through there, and they thought they were gonna have all the good, and they're gonna be able to pay for it and everything. Well, I got a feeling the county was up to no good in a lot of ways, because we had another wastewater system up there that we really didn't need in Way Hall. And when the county wanted to get out from underneath it, well, they needed the wastewater out to the Apple Avenue one. So, I think personally, a lot of it had to do with that. If we could, if we could get a line put in there, have Dalton and Lakewood and them up through there pay for it, we could shut that down and pay, sell that land. And that's what we exactly did. I think that in some ways, they ain't gonna like hearing this, but we're a lot reliable, because I'm not so sure we weren't encouraging it. Now, that was before my time. And I don't know, I don't hear too many people talk like that, but I've told two or three people now that I'm not sure that we were up to real good. And it may have been a, because it just don't look good. And so, when they wonder why people don't trust the county, things like this are what creates that. I mean, we need to have more transparency when we're trying to do things, and make sure we're very open about things, because you can't even have people wondering something like that. I think it's terrible that I even think that the county would do something like that, knowing they were gonna hurt some township, but not even caring. That's a scary situation.
The county board is gonna lose two commissioners this year, because they decided when they did the redistricting to shrink it by two. Do you think that's a good idea? Do you think it should've stayed where it's at, or even increased by two?
I like, I don't care. They can run to nine or seven, it's, I don't know, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. I don't like the way they split it up. I mean, I think they, I go to Casnovia Village, and I've been there four or five at their meetings, 38 miles from my house. I mean, it's kinda hard to represent them. I think that they split all the farmland up, which was a terrible situation, because now, I have two pieces, but Eggleston has the most people in it, so it has more power than the Holton Township and the Casnovia and Moreland that have farmland in them. When you go to Marv Engels area, he has only Brevan and Allen Sullivan, and Fruitport and part of the, up in toward the Heights, is, so where all the people are again, just took all the rights away from the farmers. And you go up to Mr. Mahoney's area, where the last of the farms are, they have basically put the cities and the townships that don't really have farms in his. So, not one farm area is getting represented very well at all anymore, and, which is very bad to me. I, they need very strong representation, because I think they're the largest producer of actual crop money in Meskegan County. They're over the manufacturers now, I believe. So, to treat them less than manufacturers are getting is bad, but it's one way of coming after tax dollars from them. So, I mean, because they don't have the representation it once had.
The county has a public works board, and the way it's set up now, the drain commissioner is there by statute, and it's comprised of county commissioners as well. And there's been some discussion to go ahead and change the makeup of the board to where some of the people on it would be appointed, that they would not be elected officials, they wouldn't have to be elected officials, that would be appointed to the board. Do you think it's a good idea or a bad idea?
I pretty well stated my case, I think it's a bad idea. I've been in a couple of meetings, and there's people that have reasons to do it. And there are some things that would take a lot of pressure off us. But as I was having a discussion today, they have one heck of a lot of power around lakes. Any board does. Because all they have to do is show the nitrates are high or anything else, and they can just put a sewer system in. Well, the problem with that is, is that, well, you're forced to hook to it, that's the problem. But the problem is, is that you no longer have an elected official, because once they put it into the hands of DEQ or say it has to be done, you've taken it out of the hands of the people. And a county board that was not elected could say, okay, well, we're gonna save your lake for you and make you eat the sewer pipe. Well, thing is, we have a community that can't afford that sewer line. But if you have no one to, even though they say, well, you're gonna be represented, you know, you only got eight, you only got eight of them, plus you got the drain commissioner. The eight could come from anywhere, and they might be all pro sewer. And the thing about that is, is five of them are gonna be pro sewer, no matter what way you go. City of Meskegan, Norton Shores, Meskegan Township, Meskegan Heights, all pro sewer. So, you got four, right there. Votes guaranteed that they wanna run sewer lines all over this county, because that's how it's gonna keep rates low. So, if you can keep rates low, you help yourself, but you hurt everybody else. But, well, let's just think about our citizens, forget everybody else. So, but then you also have the drain commissioner. Now, I'm not hacking on Dave, but Dave likes bigger government. So, now you have five votes to expand the sewer system. And who's the guy out there in Lakewood when they run that sewer line by his house and cost him 10 grand? Who's he gonna get rid of? I mean, he just got appointed person, just told him he gets to do what he said. You know, I'm trying to study it. I just got the whole report on how the act works, what kind of authority they have. And reading that, it don't look much better than what my initial thought was, I guess. I don't know if I explained anymore.
Well, the, okay, getting there, we're over, let's move off sewers and move on to water. Got two big filtration plants in the county, the City of Meskegan and City of Meskegan Heights. And the City of Meskegan Heights basically had Township of Fruitport and City of Norton Shores as customers for a number of years. And all of a sudden now, the City of Norton Shores and Township of Fruitport have signed an agreement with the City of Meskegan to move to their water system. What happens to the Heights Water Filtration Plant, and should the county have become more involved in those talks as they were going on? Should it get involved now? How should it work that, so the water rates are stabilized for the county as a whole?
Well, it seems like the contracts they're signing with the city are pretty sound. So, I think they're gonna be able to audit it, Norton Shores and Fruitport, and keep the rates relatively good. I, you know, I know a lot of people who don't want this whole thing to work, because they think it'll make the Heights fail. It may, I don't know. But I think that a lot of people tried to work with the Heights, and they feel they can. I think it's, your contract's up. I mean, it's just like buying a car, when contract's up, no one has much say about what you do with your car. And contract's up, and I think Norton Shores and Fruitport should be able to do what they want. Now, what happens to that water plant? You know, realistically, the way it worked, since the city has everybody's contracts, it seems like maybe the city should find a way to take it over. But whether that can happen, I don't know. But first and foremost, the Heights has every right to keep it, it's theirs. Would not force them to do anything with it. But if they can't afford it, then it seems if all the contracts are signed, and everybody's working through the city, it ain't gonna do any good for the county to grab it up, really, because we ain't got no one to sell them on it to, I guess. So, I'm not sure why we going way in debt if we have no, I mean, the only reason we would have it is a backup to the system that the city has. Does everybody in this county wanna eat a backup system? I mean, I don't know where to go with it. I mean, I think that we're gonna have to see if this plays out, and Norton Shores and Fruitport can even get their permits to put these lines in. I think I would like to see Norton Shores and Fruitport talk to Meskegan Township and see if there's any way to come off of their lines, instead of maybe putting a whole new line out there to Lake Shore Drive. I don't know how that works or where they got a plan, but I mean, maybe it'd be a lot shorter distance, and maybe them and Meskegan Township could work something on another tank and everything else. There might be some good things to it, or maybe not, I don't know.
Brookhaven. Meskegan's one of the few counties that actually owns and operates a nursing home. And that's come into some question the last several years, as far as the sustainability of it long-term. Should the county go ahead and try to sell that and get out of the nursing home business, or what's the best way to handle that?
I wouldn't right now. I, we have already signed all the loans and everything else. I don't think you could sell enough to pay all the loans back right now. We've hired a new director, and I can't think of his name, but he seems very, very capable. And he has tried some new ideas, he seems very open to trying new ideas. I hate to hire someone and then think in six months you're gonna fix anything. You know, but we can only keep hiring these people, and then give them two more years, two more years for so long. So, if this one can't do it, it may be time to get out from underneath it. Give him a couple of years, see what he does, makes his payments, and does everything he's supposed to. And if he does that, you know, I guess this nursing home does a lot of good. But if it can't make it, then it may be time to get out, because there's just so many nursing homes now going into business. I mean, there's no one, I think going up toward Way Hall, there's one over here on Dangle Road or something going in over near Industrial Park. I mean, and they're gonna be cutting each other's throat when you're putting this many in. So, the prices are probably gonna go down, not up. So, maybe it has run its course, I don't know, you know?
The county board is obviously Republican, Democrat. I don't think there's ever been a third-party candidate that got elected there. Should the county board even be partisan?
Well, I like to think I ain't, really. I just fly across the handweed a way, I think, you know. But yeah, I'd like to be able to run as an independent, actually. But you can't win that way. Should it be, I mean, but it always is partisan. Even the judges, if you look at them, you know what side of the team they're on. So, I don't know. I think you can't be non-partisan. I mean, I think you gotta run as an independent if you are, otherwise, everybody knows which are anyway. I mean, anybody that talks to me knows that I try to work across the board, but I'm basically a Republican, just the way it is. And everybody knows it. So, I don't think it really makes any difference, personally. I wish people thought it didn't make so much difference, because that, to have people just vote straight party, I think is foolish. I don't vote straight party. I, you know, I got people on both sides that I like, and I think everybody should look at all the candidates, whether they're Democrats or Republicans. And you don't even have to think I'm the best candidate. If I ain't, you know, if you're a Republican, you don't think I'm the best candidate, then I would encourage you to vote the other side, actually. I mean, I think that we have, you know, look at the people, make sure they're doing what they want.
What about the other county offices? Registered deeds, county clerk, drain commissioner, sheriff, prosecutor, is it necessary to have those be partisan?
Well, again, I think it always know. But if you look at a lot of them, how many times they switch parties back and forth every time they have to, to try to run, because they gotta run against someone that's been in there a long time, so they'll switch to the other party to try to run. You know, it would be nice, but again, I think everybody knows what everybody is. I guess, it just don't matter to me. I know how, I know what it is. And I don't think it matters to me one way or the other, I just don't care.
What was your biggest surprise when you got to the county board two years ago?
Well, like I said, I think just the lack of long-term sustainability in any program. If it feels good, let's pass it. And that's the furthest thing from my mind. But, you know, I love feel-good things. Everybody acts like, oh, Alan's against everything, you know, and, you know, he just don't care for people. Well, that's not the case. I mean, everybody cares for people. I love people, you know, but God, we can only afford so much. And you can't put a million-dollar program in place with a $100 bill. It ain't gonna work. You're gonna have to go get money from somewhere to pay that other $900. And I want that, if you're gonna put a million-dollar program in place, have the million dollars. That's what I'm asking. And other than that, I don't care what feel-good or not. I'm not a, I am not a social person. There's no question that it's all about money for me. Everything is about the money. I mean, you can, any social program can be a good program if it's paid for. It's all about the money. And, but if it can't be paid for, it just ain't a program I want.
Earlier this year, the county had the opportunity to lower the tax rate based on what the numbers when they came back from the assessments. And it was, I think it's called a headley reduction, or headley override, or something like that. And the county board declined to do that. They left the tax rate where it is, when they could've given some money back to the taxpayer.
Yeah, I called a tax increase. The board has said, no, Alan, it ain't a tax increase. It is a tax increase. When the state tells you they had extra money, so you're getting extra money, so you can lower your tax rate, it was .034, probably wouldn't matter to anyone. But that's not the point. The point is, it's a tax increase. Could we put it back to where it was? Well, if the state told us to lower, that's what we were supposed to do. And if we raised it up to where it was, it's a tax increase. You can have it any way you want, and it's a tax increase. So, that's just it.
So, that just, in other words, that was an irresponsible action by the county to not to, not to give it back, not to say?
I would say it is. I would definitely say it was. I mean, if we, if we have extra, the state said we had extra, and they were giving us all a break for being good people, why didn't the county say, you're all good people, and we appreciate it, and we're gonna give you some too? And they didn't look at it like I looked at it. So, it was one of them, won 10 votes, you know. And I mean, I tried to convince them, but, you know, Heath Capton got up there in front of us, three meetings later, because I was running around saying we took, we increased people's taxes, and he tried to explain away, saying it wasn't a tax increase. And I don't care how many of them people that want more of my money, it's a tax increase. It just flat out is. Even though it was pretty small, it just would be nice once if the government would think, maybe we ought to give a little bit back. You know, but I've never heard them say that. That don't happen.
What do you think is, you're re-elected in November, what's the biggest concern of yours for the next two years?
Well, I think more, the county taking more control. I mean, we see the dog licenses and all, they're talking about hiring another employee for the treasurer's office, because he wants to handle all the dog licenses. And he's trying to bring all that in. And we could, what we should've done was the opposite, and turned all the dog licenses over to the veterinarians. And that way, when you got your dog shots, you just pick up your license at the same time. Leave it in, leave it in all the township's offices, where old people can, don't have to drive all the way to here to Meskegan. So, and whether it's something that small, or takeover the public works board, which I would think it'd be, or it chale is giant. And, you know, there's always gonna be things coming at us all the time. But you, my biggest concern is, is the takeover of the people. And it's a slow, progressive takeover. Just keep nibbling away, nibbling away, nibbling away. And, and you can just see it in the townships, how they've just lost their rights. Cities, I'm sure, villages, everybody. We're just losing more and more rights. So, when you go in there, the other day, I was in there, and Boardman Lakewood said, we cannot do anything to help you, sir, because the state has mandated all these laws, and this is the way you're gonna do it. So, he was literally getting screwed. And there's nothing he can do to stop him. And it was over something pretty trivial. So, you know, and we do the same thing. We just keep taking over more and more. And, you know, we went through a year ago where they want to take over all inspection services, and they wanted all zoning in the county to be the same. Well, you know, as long as I'm on this board, these are the things I'm gonna fight. I don't want city inspectors in Holton, where I live. I mean, we moved out of the country to be in the country, I guess. And zoning, I certainly don't wanna follow the laws that they have down here in my area. And so, I, there are just 100 things that we had to keep fighting to keep government in our control, instead of them controlling us.
How is, what's the best way to do that?
Get more people like me elected, maybe. I don't think there's another way. I don't know how you know how to do it. Because when you got all big government people, and you got directors believing in big government, no one has to take care of themselves anymore. And, and the hardest part to do is, if you get people like me elected, is to make the cuts, because it's not, you know, it's not Because it's not, you know, we ain't, it's not as if any of us that are like me wanna cut anybody. But we have to do what we have to do, do at the same time. So um, but I don't, I don't know how you're gonna, I don't know how you get them to start thinking a different direction. Uh, I don't know how you do that.
Do you think that the state has been helpful to the counties in general? Or do you think the state's been more of a, a hindrance or a big brother type of uh influence?
Well, I see the state doing the exact same thing the counties are doing. Counties are trying to take over the townships and the cities and the state's trying to take over the county. I go out to MDOT and you look out there at the industrial park and there's twenty-five cars out there. Well, MDOT, they're all engineers and people that hold paper. So here you're paying all these guys a hundred thousand dollar a year and all our roads go to hack. Uh, we have good engineers right here in Meskegon County out at the road commission. So if you took and laid all them people off, just think what that two billion, five million dollars would do fixing roads in our county. Um, but yet the state is taking more and more control and you see in roads get rebuilt that have been just rebuilt two or three years ago. Apple Avenue, they repave it, two or three years later, they take all the concrete up and they repave it again. Well, this is the kind of stuff, and our roads all go to hack. Because we're shifting power from the local road commissions over to the state. And you can, you can just see it in every aspect of our lives where they, they, they just keep taking more and more and more and more. And it's a presumably progressive way of literally taking our townships over and our local government over and.
The state recently passed legislation saying that the counties could disband their road commission and absorb that into the general county budget and operations. Is that a good idea?
Um, it looks real good on paper. Um, I'd like to do it, but you can't. Um, there's two or three reasons. First off, their, uh, their liabilities out there are so high with their pensions and mountain insurance. Um, they're gonna go under on their own, we won't have to worry about it, probably. They ain't gonna like hearing that one, but that's what I think. Um, and another thing is, is we have at least five or six cities in this county. They all have their own road commissions. And if you point that to a board, um, the county, now you have the city of Meskegon, Meskegon Heights, Whitehall. A lot of places don't even have anything to do with the road commission, now running a road commission. So are you any better off? Maybe worse off. Because they may not see uh at all why we taking care of any of the country roads. So um, that may not be the best plan either. I mean, I, I think of, I had more than township supervisor uh explain his thought on that. Because we had a, quite a discussion on whether we should, we could do this. And I don't think it, it, he's probably right and it probably won't work.
Matt's bus system, right now, it basically serves the metropolitan area, but the, the county pays for it. Should there be a uh bus run out to uh Vravna, Casnovia, Holton, Twin Lake area?
Um, not with our long-term state build plan. I think, you know, right now, we got the buses given to us for free, I gather, to go out in these outer areas. Um, they're depending on money coming in. And this governor might get a wing, whim that we're gonna spend it on this. Next governor says, no, we're not gonna spend it this way. And then it goes away. I don't wanna put anything in place that a year from now or two years from now I had to take away. It's harder to take it away than not give it to them at all. I don't wanna put anything in place where you're gonna come back and ask for a millage for this whole county. This is what probably bothers me the most is because um, you get people hooked on and then the populated areas get it, like Eggleston or whoever. And then you say, well, we're gonna have to have a millage to run it. Well, now you back to them little farmers out there in Casnovia and up in Montague and Holton. That, that will lots of land, pay enormous amounts of taxes. They're the ones that end up eating this thing and that bus ain't coming there. So um, there's gotta be a sustainability plan, you know, back, you know, I've never been against this. Give me the plan for ten years or five years, how you're gonna operate it and how you're gonna pay for it and then we'll go with it. But until you can come up with that plan, um, I ain't going just because of feel-good. We're right back to that feel-good idea and that's not gonna fly. I'm not, you know, it ain't worth winning an election for to um, put buses to somebody and then take it away. I'm, I'm not that interested in the election now. This is the way it is. If it ain't payable, we ain't doing it.
Is there anything else you'd like to add that we didn't cover?
Well, um, I think that the only thing that we probably haven't done, and it's more of a speech. I think that times are getting tougher and people have had enough, I think, of spending and just pan and pan and seeing no end to it. We have every department now and everywhere you look in government, we just make more and more administrators. We get rid of more and more of the help. And I think it's a backward way to do anything. Whenever we take on a project now, you know, if it's a million dollars, I guarantee half of it'll go out to administration. The other half goes to maybe actually working on someone's house. It's, it's the most backward way. And um, we need to get, we just need to get back to where um, our employees are important. And actually getting the work done that we're here to do is getting done, you know? Instead of, uh, it just isn't going very smooth, I don't think. I don't even know if that answered the question.
That, that does. That sums it up quite nicely. So thank you for taking some of your time and spending it with us today.
Yep.
And good luck in the election.
Yeah, thank you very much.